Holy Julie News, to the pride of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, and just as for all.
Oh, Scott Ferguson here.
Michael Green here.
Tim Kerman.
Roxanne Tusk, you had your three of them on, wasn't it?
Approval of minutes? Has everyone had an opportunity to review them?
Yep.
Yep.
Great. I will gladly take a motion based on that.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 23rd as written.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So there's three sets of mine public.
You want to address that?
Yep.
Mine public on September 25th, September 30th, and the early receiving October 7th.
So I'll make a motion to seal these minutes from September 25th, September 30th, and 10/7 for five years.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This happened before law board.
Oh, yeah.
So for what's up with the 9/25, Roxanne, yes, Tracy, yes?
Tim Kerman, yes.
Michael Green.
9/30, Roxanne, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Michael Green, yes.
Tim Kerman, yes.
And 10/7, Roxanne, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Michael Green, yes.
Scott Ferguson, yes?
Tim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, old business, Port Memorial. Still standing by on that. We'll have more for the next meeting on that one. Direct deposit.
So I went back through the emails and I found that I was on the just not of the but we do have an email back from Department of Labor saying we can't require people to go direct deposit. So we strongly recommend that we can.
Alright, new business. ZBAA application for a new form subdivision.
Alright, are we looking at the VBA stuff now?
Yep.
Alright, so what's called put those in your folder. These are the new forms and rules the VBA was hoping to adopt. What they want to do happen is for the select board to review them and then at our not this coming meeting, but our next meeting hopefully adopt them.
Okay, so this is for review?
Yes.
So this is what Roxanne gave earlier?
What Roxanne gave you earlier? It's probably the same thing, yeah.
Yes, it is, yeah, okay.
So again, like I said, what's called we could select work to review these in our 20, our October 28th meetings. If there is anything that needs to be changed, let us know. Let the VBA know and I'll take it back to the VBA. Or if it's good to go as is, then we can send it back down to the VBA and have them adopt as is.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Alright. New Portsmouth Road. This is a topic that's come up in discussion for the town as far as maintenance of New Portsmouth Road. The, uh, the road has been maintained up just about to the end by the town since Dan has been the highway director. It has come to the board's attention that ultimately that road was adopted to be maintained up to 50 feet past the Snyder property, which is map 21 lot B. Back in 197...
Seven or 78.
Seventy-seven or seventy-eight. The townspeople voted to maintain that road up to that point. There is a year-round resident up there. They've been in communication with the board as far as the road. At this point, I'm going to open it up for discussion amongst the board members, but ultimately we're looking to decide whether the town will continue services as far as maintenance such as grading the dirt portion up there, plowing and so on and so forth. The previous highway director did maintain that road, which is why our current highway director continued to maintain it because when he took over, he was by his predecessors, he was driven around town and basically said, "We take care of this road. We do this, we do that." So he just assumed that that was part of the town maintenance. Again, coming to light discussion, looking into the matter further, we did find, like I said, back in 77 or 78, there was a warrant article that came before the town as far as that maintenance, where the town voted to only maintain that road up to 50 feet past the Snyder property, which is basically 50 feet past about where the pavement ends. So with that said, I'll open it up for discussion. Anybody has any discussion on it?
I don't have, my only point would be is if the townspeople had voted that to not maintain it, then I think otherwise, the only way I think to go forward with continuing to maintain is to have the warrant presented potentially by the residents for the townspeople to vote whether we should or not. We don't maintain any private roads. We don't maintain tangled wood. We don't maintain, there are a number of roads that we don't maintain. The town doesn't maintain and I think by maintaining a portion of the road that we shouldn't, that kind of opens us up for issues with other roads in town.
I second that. My thought process in it is we do for one, we do for all. Although there's varying degrees of differences amongst the roads, private roads, distinctive roads, as a nature standpoint, if you build over the road itself, it's a dirt road, just like Deer Road and multiple other roads in town. Me personally, I would like to see that we'll move forward with a warrant article, requesting that the townspeople vote whether we continue to maintain that upper portion of the Portsmouth Road.
It's noted that we have a listing from the state of New Hampshire and part of that, well, it's from the Scotts, it's 911 listing, but it also, it's what the state uses to produce the, come up with the calculation for the highway grant, the block money, the block grant money we get, and it's based off of the roads that the town maintains. And it states on there, all the roads are in town and it's got them identified, whether it's a public road, it's a private road, it's a classic, and it's not being taken in classics, which is subject to gates and bars and whatnot. So we're looking at that as well as far as when we, you know, determine all of this too.
I'm okay with your guys' decision. Open it up for a warrant article.
Katie?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So we've been maintaining that for at least 40 years. So does that, so there's a precedent established. Does that provide, have any rights to, you know, say you guys have been doing this?
Well, I don't think it's been being done since 40 years, but, no, I'm just saying. But I mean, but the townspeople did vote. I mean, and if their understanding is that's what was supposed to be being done, what was being done elsewise is not knowledge to the townspeople.
So I don't have a dog in this, right? I'm just wondering if, you know?
Yeah.
No, I get it.
Now you are, but I, I kind of what's called understand where you come from. If this has been being maintained for a length of time, why, why stop now?
It's a long, it's a pretty large section of property, a road to be maintaining. And it's no different than I think, to some degree, at the end of like Pine Ridge. You know, like the garbage truck doesn't go, you know, won't go down there or anything or whatnot. If we, if we get one of our cop trucks stuck down in there, then that's, you know, on a road that technically we shouldn't be maintaining, the town's going to be out of some money.
Did you say to the council?
Uh, we, I reached out to HNA and they, you know, stated, came back and basically stated that if it's...
We don't know how long it's been maintained. At some, at some point, under the previous highway director, there was communication between this homeowner up there and him. And at some point, data known, the town started to maintain.
I don't want to do that with the town because they're nice people.
Question on your warrant, well, you found one in 1978, you said, right?
I believe it was 77 or something.
Probably 78.
Do you guys make sure that I'm on the warrant?
Yes, yes.
And I want to bring up Katie, when you said that, I'm sorry, that's me. President, you've been hearing it, so I would make sure liability wise for account that we don't get into another, not, not everything all issue.
Alright, I say we table it until the next meeting. Yep. My vote would be to just reach out to legal one more time and confirm what, what our standpoint is, whether, whether there's a legality issue there or not. I don't believe there will be.
Is anybody know if there was a legal issue when we stopped plowing the private roads that we just recently, what in the last five years stopped them? Under his, 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 um, official...
Um, it was tape, tape lane.
Yep.
No, there hasn't been, there's been, none of that.
I mean, this legal can go both ways.
Oh, absolutely.
It could be, anybody can bring litigation. We could be sued for doing the opposite, so.
I'm fine with a vote today or...
No, let's table it for now and one more, reach, yep. And then, and then on the 28th, make decision. I have no problem with having, or stop maintaining and have a warrant article, you know, require a warrant article to change it, but we should probably do now. Do our due diligence.
I will reach out to that resident up there and just let him know that a decision will be made at the 28th meeting. Traveler's insurance, the boiler has been replaced?
He's, he's already come and inspected it.
Okay.
And he is sending the information to the state to let him know that all is all set.
Perfect.
Nice.
So with that said, Scott, are we going to, okay.
So with that said, transitioning over from, from an oil burner system to a propane system, which is what we transitioned over to with the on-demand. Dead River has been out, surveyed the area. We've met with them, we've discussed where to put a tank, so on and so forth. They were booked out, this was a couple of weeks ago. At that point, they were still booked out till, it actually was mid-November. I spoke with them and let them know that that would not work for us. The soonest they were able to get us in would be October 23rd. So as of right now, although that system has been tested, the heating company brought a portable propane tank with them and tested the whole system to ensure its operability. They have offered for a cost to put in a 100 gallon temporary tank, should we choose to do so.
What would the cost be?
They didn't give me an exact cost. It would assume to be a few hundred bucks.
So, so that kind of circles back actually, let you say that. So the money that we use to put the heating system in at the municipal building, now is paid for out of our funds. And so based off of where we are now, what we have left for our funds is just over $310. So I would, I would suggest that we bring in the temporary tank and use the money from our for that.
I'll second that.
That should get us, be more, less than that?
I would think it would be less than that, yes. The way I understood of talking to him is we'd be looking at the cost of the propane. It's his tank, so when it's, when the new tank comes, we'll take his tank back. And then, above and out, it's worth the labor to do it, to plummet it. So I can reach out to him tomorrow if the board would like.
Yes, alright.
Alright, so hearing a motion to move forward with that tank, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just letting you know, two Dead River did show up the other day to fill the home open.
Oh, it's a little tent to go.
It, well, cover thing was on and outside, so I explained to him.
Oh, yeah, there's no filth, it's gone.
So I explained where to move it over, but they hadn't been notified on that part, so. In their department, in their business, they need to notify me.
Gotcha. Yeah, okay, that does include the tank, that expenditure, perfect. For those that haven't seen the sign at the municipal office, on election day, one side of it decided to blow away in the wind. I did locate it on the other side. We do have it. With that said, I did reach out, I've only gotten one quote so far. I reached out to Moosebrook right here in Middleton. I do have a price from them. Depending upon what we would like for our final product, it's anywhere from 1,200 to above $2,000. The sign itself was 1,200 to 1,500. And then I discussed with them putting a, like PVC composite sleeve over the post that are there, nice white sleeve, nice white sleeve with some nice decorative caps on top of it. That would be the additional cost of about $450, should we choose to do that. I am going to reach out and try to get one or two more quotes from a couple of local companies, but that's where we stand right now on the, on the sign out front. That we already discussed.
So we have the MS 530 document that needs to be signed so that can get included into continuing. So that's a big move on to accept the tax rate.
Tim, do you have any other business?
No.
Mike?
Yep. Our last meeting was in videotape, so I wanted to make sure the people that, you know, who go attend the meeting could hear just the anniversaries. We decided that we're going to be doing our own birthday cards and anniversary cards for all these town employees and we've been doing that since July. So for anniversaries, we have Brian Taylor hit five years at the fire department in August. For September, that was the only one in August. For September, we have Andrea Bowden with 27 years with the fire department. Christine Bartlett was two years with welfare department. Jeff Eldridge, Wally Gilvara, is that how you say his last name? Brett Wigan, all had anniversaries with the fire department, five years, six years, and eight years. Thomas Hughes hit her first year anniversary in September. Mike Wolfie has two years with the PD. And Trevor Hatton Swartz has three years with the fire department in September.
Congratulations.
Alright, with no other business to conduct for the town, I open it up. I'll look at my comments.
I have a memorandum. And I typed, and it's in regards to ZBAA minutes dated 16 April of this year. My name's Craig movie. I live in 112 Pine Ridge. Anyways, the reason for my concern is that I was falsely identified by the ZBAA in my name and my address was entered as well. It made it through the approval of the minutes and now it is the way that it is. This was dated last April. I wasn't on the sign-in sheet. So basically, the question is, how did I get on? I don't know, how did I get on the minutes to begin with? And how do we correct it?
So Tim, Tim is our liaison for the ZBAA.
So like you and I talked about before, I think that what happened was is, as you mentioned, the person talking, their audio was inaudible, so there was a question as to who it was. Somebody must have identified or applied with you and it was put on there. As far as the things you're asking for, we have no problem amending the ZBAA minutes, removing your name and address from them.
What kind of surety do I have that my name hasn't been used? I don't know. You, you mistook me? I've lived here for 30 years. I was mistaken during an official...
It wasn't me who did it, but I, that's what I'm assuming happened. I mean, there have been times when people get mistaken. The best we can do is offer an apology and then move on from there.
Well, I agree with you that mistakes happen, but there's also checks and balances in place, like the sign-in roster. That was blatantly, I don't know, nobody took the time to check the sign-in roster. Nobody took the time to contact me to see if there was need.
So what I would recommend, Craig, and so what I would say, Tim, is going forward with any minutes, such as ZBAA claim work, because they, we do have sign-in people, is that basically our person can take some minutes to make sure that nobody is put in there that is not on the sign-in sheet. I mean, that's what I would like to say.
Yeah.
So you do the 500-day audit.
500-day audit?
Go back 500 days. I should have zero involvement in this town with its politics. It's a vote of time, Ms. Willis started. So I guess I want sure to know that I'm not in on any phantom minutes where I've been misidentified the way I was at the ZBAA, at the ZBAA event.
I can, I can take that on and make sure, go back and see, because you're going to show up to certain points for the, when did you get off the budget committee?
Probably two years.
Five, so it's been, that's been, that would be over 500 days.
I should have zero involvement.
Okay, okay. No, I just want to make sure, because I don't remember what that cost over time was. It seems like yesterday to me that you, you know, and we still have openings, you know. Wait, you want me?
It's all this bad for my health.
Oh, okay, well.
We miss you.
Maybe everybody else is still.
So I will take that on and hope I will have an answer by the next meeting on 10/28. If that's okay.
With, so to fix this, from what I've read, the ZBAA needs to meet, which they are next week. They need to basically make a motion to adjust.
Yep.
And they're going to do that.
And that's something we will do.
That's...
Alright, that will leave me a lot of concern. I just don't like to have, I know it's borderline there, false witness, in my opinion. I'd rather not be involved with that.
Fair.
Fair enough.
Alright.
I needed something.
Say again?
I said I needed something to do.
Question, on your plate, when the treasurer gives you a monthly report, what is he reconciling to for the base statement? Like what software does he reconcile? So you have two softwares, you have the base statement and which is the treasure?
He's been, he's reconciling to the records that he gets from the town clerk tax collector.
Okay, what software does he use?
Oh.
Town Cloud?
No, no, I don't know. I think he's using Excel, and I can find out Kathleen. I'm not sure he has a, he's using any software package, but I'll find out.
I'm just wondering, and then where does that keep our, our software?
Sage.
Sage, so he uses Sage, yeah. Are we taking that in next year? Are we doing an RFP for software or no?
Um, not at the moment. We haven't really discussed that. I know that what we talked about earlier in the year was Town Hawk? Town Cloud. But it's still feeling new, so it's one of those things where I don't want, but that, Town Cloud is what, it does our website in their cloud-based and whatever, so we haven't really looked into it. And I know it's a concern of kids to try and get it off of Sage, because Sage is not really user-friendly. So that is probably going to be something that we need to be looking at as the budget comes up.
Yes.
Yeah, something that you can add also that one.
So that's on your plate?
Yeah.
So you guys want an RFP yet? You want to know if it's out?
We would have to.
Okay. That's right.
Because we're looking for something that advert, the town clerk, everything she inputs, we want it to be able to cross over and go into, so it doesn't have to be put in again.
So you're thinking about getting rid of advertising?
No, no, no.
Oh, advertising.
Advertising is what, um...
Yeah, the town clerk.
Town clerk uses. So we want a program that when she downloads it or when she closes out at nighttime, it all goes over to that same software.
Got it.
Because right now I'm inputting every transaction that she does.
Yeah. My words, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Point?
I have several things. First of all, I don't know if it's you guys who need to talk about it. Some people keep posting signs, big cardboard, I mean, signs on the pole at the end of the pole. Somebody has taken two down, there's another one up there now. I have a total car, we can't move sideways to get out of that road. And that's a dangerous road to get out of as it is.
Are they political signs?
No, it's like plumbing and different advertisements for this.
And that's a utility pole?
Yes.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any signs on utility poles, there's actually statute on it.
So who would we see to, can we rip them down ourselves, Tim?
You can rip them down if you like. That gives you great pleasure to do it.
They probably would. So please take your couple down that are up there. Now there's another one, probably later.
So maybe, Tim, we can post something out on the web, telling them, type saying, you know, unless you have permission from the utility company and before you're doing it, we want to see the permission.
It's, you know, it's one thing when it's like, there's a cat poster or something and it's wrapped around the post.
Yeah.
But the same signs, you can't ask them to get out of that road and it's very dangerous, so.
Yeah, there's, there's that and I don't recollect if there was statute or town ordinance, but I know when I was running, I went and read all the town ordinances as well. So between one of the two, it clearly states that signs cannot be on utility poles.
So I won't get in any trouble if I rip it down?
I'll come bail you out. I'll come bail you out.
All right. Perfect.
We can do a video if you want. Come on, it's great fun.
Hey, no, thanks for that. Okay, and also, the ref is having a Halloween catalog. October twenty-sixth here, starting at four to at the beginning, second to top end. But it's kind of like a come and go.
Can you send me, you got the flyer?
Yes.
Can you send that to me so I can put it online?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And on November second, we are doing our second craft fair from eleven-four. And we do have a pay-per-view circus coming up for Christmas. I think that's December fourteenth. And there'll be more information on that. See you soon. Yes.
The ref department has been doing an amazing job the past couple of years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're a great crew, very small. If anybody wants to join, we need people. We're not doing for Halloween like we wanted to, because we just don't have the people to do it. So, but we'll try to do our best.
Absolutely.
What's the name of the road that Joe Barbour gets over to cross?
Other than that.
Okay, that's a private road.
It's not private.
It's not private? The town owns that road? When did that happen?
That's, as long as I remember, as long as I've been in town. I mean, I can go back and check and see. I certainly can take a look at that, but... We can certainly look on the listing that we have from the nine-one-one. See how it's classified next, but I can certainly find when it was taken over by the town.
Where is the listing, the nine-one-one listing?
On the desk. No, on the desk, in a folder. And Scott's gonna reach out to get a more updated list, so that we don't think we have any more roads in town, but just to get a more up-to-date list. We will share that.
In the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I will attach the meeting minutes.
Your name might be in those meeting minutes.
Definitely will be in those.
Quick update, because you didn't ask, but I'll give a quick update on the parking lot. I spoke with Dan today. It looks like they were planning to be out there today, but the rain kinda dwindled that. But what they did do today was they set all the GPS coordinates for the grades and everything. I believe he said the drainage is all installed at this point, as far as cupboards, basins, catches, what have you. And the tail end of this week, beginning of next week, is when they'll start with the grading process. And it should move relatively quickly after that. So there's, there's a strong possibility that within the next seven to eight, two to three weeks, that whole project will be complete.
Is that gonna put the flooding in the cellar?
Yes. Yep. It should actually, the design and the setup, from looking at it, the water will shed away from the building. But they've also installed, that's what the green pipes are that you see at the corners of the building. They've also installed underground drainage. So those pipes are designed so that if they put gutters on the building, the gutters will go down into those, drain out to the catch basin that's out there, actually out across the Ridge Road and on the police department side of the Ridge Road down through the drainage there. But Dan is checking in with them daily. They're making good progress. And he led me to believe today that it should move pretty quickly, barring knowing major inclimate weather. Obviously, if we get severe rains or whatever, that'll hamper that timeline. Oh, yes, and our new truck came in. Been a couple of years, but the new trucks did come in. And that is going, the purchase and sales will take place on that, hopefully this week. And then that is heading off to be outfitted with the bed, sander, plow setup and all of that. Dan said that it'll take about two weeks for them to complete that process. So we should absolutely have that new truck in motion before winter hits.
Climax truck, is it?
International.
The plow truck.
Big one?
Yep, big one.
Yeah, they asked me to add the insurance to it, so I put it on climax.
Other than that, if I don't see any other public comment, I will gladly take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion major in seven oh six.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.